I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, June 7th, 2022. Chris, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Gebhardt.
Here.
Niznik. Rajpal.
Here.
Oh, Niznik. Rajpal.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Ziss.
Here.
I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us electronically on BV22. We're glad to have you observe and participate in our meetings. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve our agenda for the evening.
So move.
Okay. Richard moves, and Stacy seconds. Can you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Niznik.
Yes.
Rajpal.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yeah.
Ziss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
We'll begin, as we always do, with Dr. Anderson's report. Dr. Anderson, good evening.
Thank you, poor President Gebhardt members of the board. It's good to see you all this evening. A few updates today for the board and the community. Today, we finished up our second day of the Second Annual BVSD Leadership Academy. It's an opportunity for us to bring all of our school-based leaders together before they head off for summer break. We're continuing with the theme of leading with both the head and heart. Had some great public speakers come in. We had just lots of really great opportunities for them to learn and grow. So I want to thank all of our school leaders that gave us two days of their time to learn with us this week. So this week, board members, is the 2022 USA Special Olympic Games that are in Orlando, Florida. And we have two of the 54 athletes who are representing Colorado are actually either current or former Boulder Valley School District students. We have Michelle Zhang, who's a rising junior from Monarch High School, Skoyotes. She's competing in tennis. And then BVSD alum Lee Schaefer is competing in swimming. And as you know, Lee is Laura's daughter. And so we're wishing both Michelle and Lee the best of luck on their trip in competing. In case you want to tune in, some of the events from the USA Games are being televised by ESPN and locally on 7 News. So wanted to share that with everyone. Board members, and I believe this is on action this evening, later in the meeting, the board will be voting to approve an amendment to the academic calendar for the '22-'23 school year. In most years, and as the board will know, our calendar is set on a two-year cycle. In most years, we're doing a lot of collaborating with other school districts, University of Colorado as the major employer in our area, to ensure that, to the extent possible, our breaks align. Unfortunately, last time when we approved our calendars, not everybody had yet approved their calendars. And so our spring break for 2023, as the calendar stands currently, is different from the University of Colorado. And we know that that will have a very negative impact on our community. So tonight, we're proposing that our break move to March 27th-21st, 27th through the 31st in 2023 to align with CU's break. We don't understand this change may have some impact on families that have already planned around those dates. And those families that are that organized, I commend you. It seems like a long time away. But we'll make sure that we provide those families with the ability, excuse absences caused by this situation, to make sure that we're holding those families harmless. And going forward, as we've worked closely with university and local school districts, we're dedicated to continuing to work together to align as many of our breaks as possible. So that will be for action this evening. And then the last thing, board members, I'd like to talk to you all about, and talk to our community about a little bit, is just, and just really take an opportunity to speak to, is the, I think, really, an important issue in K-12 education here in Colorado, and that's what's going on in one of our neighboring school districts, Adams 14. So board members, you'll know that the Colorado Accountability Act, as part of the law, requires the state board to step in and direct changes to a district to improve student outcomes when a school district has had more than five years of low ratings. And we know that, based on the data and what we've read in the news, Adams 14 has posted nine years of low ratings on the state accountability system as it stands today. And I would say that, you know, the state board has been intervening in Adams 14 for a majority of that time. And the measures that they've taken up to this point have not worked. And seemingly, out of frustration, the Colorado State Board of Education recently voted to invoke a 30-year-old law in an attempt to take the unprecedented step of initiating the district reorganization process for Adams 14. I'm here tonight to tell you I'm joining superintendents from across the state to push back against this decision and urge the state board of education to reconsider. And for a simple reason: This idea won't work. It won't work. It won't approve outcomes for students. As a matter of fact, what will happen here will compound the stress and challenge that's happening in Adams 14. And I think it will not fix the issues, but I think it'll compound those issues. I can tell you that the way that the law works as it stands now, and this is why I don't think this will work, that there will be a committee formed from folks in Adams 14, and then from members of the community in the surrounding districts, professionals and community members. So Adams 14, then 27J Brighton School District, Mapleton School District, and Adams 12. And as the law states, they're supposed to come together to further study the issue. And then, once they come together on a recommendation, it's put to a vote to each one of those communities to whether or not they would want to absorb what would then be the Adams 14 school district. Now, if the plan is rejected by the majority of voters in any district, the committee commissioner can come up with another new plan. But I will tell you, all three districts have already come out, and I believe all of their boards of education have come out opposed to this plan. And so the school districts aren't supporting the plan, the superintendents aren't supporting the plan, and yet the state board of education is pushing forward full speed. Now, I can tell you that, as a member of DASC, the Denver Area School Superintendent Consortium, that I have the opportunity and pleasure to interact with Dr. Loria, who's the new superintendent, who started this year, but because of the issues with MGT, the management company that was there, then they weren't there, has really not had a fair shake in regards to get the opportunity to lead with her board, to lead for better outcomes. Dr. Loria is an established leader, established turnaround leader, working in some of the largest, most complex districts in the entire country: San Diego, Houston, Las Vegas. These are big cities, big cities with big challenges, and she has done a really great job there. But in talking with her, in preparing for all these meetings to talk about this decision, her and her team have spent around 325 hours just preparing to come in front of the state board, meet with the state board. You start to break that out, that's like 40 days of instruction, where she could be in schools, in classrooms, working with kids, working with teachers. Now, I understand that the state board of education feels like they have to act. But I will tell you, at the root cause of this is our school accountability law. And I will tell you, as superintendent of this district, working with other superintendents, it'll be my goal to make sure that we're advocating to improve that law. Board members, as you know, based on a bill that was passed last year, the current accountability and accreditation system is being audited, right? And so I'm not sure what that will turn up. But I will tell you that regardless of what it turns up, we have to find better ways to do this. We have to find better ways to think about accountability beyond test scores. We have to figure out better ways of accountability so school districts with high levels of students growing up in poverty, high levels of students in color, aren't the ones that are always being graded the worst and having to deal with these repercussions. I don't think that's fair. I think, as a state, as an education community, we can and should do better. And so I just wanted to share my thoughts on that. There's a state board of education meeting on Wednesday. Again, board members, I signed a letter that was sent to the state board today, along with many superintendents from throughout the Denver metro. I'm proud, as a group, we're taking a lead on this. Obviously, we want to make sure that all kids get the best outcomes, right? And we take that incredibly serious, and we take that incredibly seriously here. The solution they've rolled out is going to take a lot of work, cause a lot of angst, and is not going to solve the problem. And so that's why I shared what I shared with you all this evening. That's all I have for my superintendent comments.
So we'll start with remote board members. Any questions? We'll start with Beth.
Thanks, Rob, for sharing that. I really appreciate that, and I think it's an important message to be getting out there. I wholeheartedly support your stance on this, absolutely. I mean, it does seem that this provision, this rule, really targets our most vulnerable students, and that's absolutely inappropriate. And I'm very glad to hear and proud that our school district will be supporting efforts to mitigate that. So thank you for your work on that, and that's all.
Nicole.
I don't have any comments. Thanks, Kathy.
Kitty.
No comments, but thanks, Rob, for getting us more informed about this, and also for your stance, along with the other superintendents, of pushing back.
Stacy.
Yeah, Rob, I fully support your efforts in supporting Adams 14, so thank you for that leadership. I have a question about the calendar. When we met, I don't know, probably two years ago about the calendar, I brought up whether St. Vrain had the same calendar as us. Are they moving theirs as well to be in alignment with CU?
Not to my knowledge, they are not, at this point.
Okay. So, as I shared many times over the past several years, we have a lot of teachers that their kids go to St. Vrain. And so during that week, we can expect a lot of teachers out. That happened to my son many times over the years when they weren't in alignment, and then when they were in alignment, things worked so much better. So I just want to make sure that we're aware of that, have subs ready, whatever it is we need to do to support them as they go on spring break with their kids. Okay.
Richard, any comments?
No, just to say that I also support your efforts, Rob, as it relates to Adams 14. I've known that district for many, 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 many years, and that issue, in terms of what the state board of education is trying to do, I think, is a crazy issue, you know, for the lack of a better word. There's a lot of things that need to be fixed, and by trying to eliminate that school district is not going to fix that at all whatsoever. So I appreciate what you're doing. Now, I guess a question for us as a board: Do we need to act as a board, or do anything in terms of resolution or anything like that? No?
Richard, we had thought about a resolution, and as part of my comments, I was going to read the Adams 12 one, but we kind of decided that just supporting Rob and his efforts might be a little more nimble way to do it. And then he'll just keep us surprised as things are going. Since the state board's meeting tomorrow anyway, I don't know that our resolution would have much impact on them that quickly. Seth, go.
The resolution, I mean, I think that the sentiment of the board really gets the point across. But there's a couple other points that I wanted to make. So the law that is being evoked here was passed when I was a senior in high school, first issue. And then also, when you think about the makeup of Adams 14, which is 91% students of color compared to the state average of 48%, and when you think about 72% of students in Adams 14 qualify for free reduced lunch compared to the state average of 37%, right? And we wonder why our accountability system doesn't fit for the school that veers so far from the mean. When you think about a school and accountability system that really forgives most school districts for the gaps that they have, it doesn't hold them accountable in the ways that it probably should, including Boulder Valley, which is why our strategic plan is designed the way that it is. It's why our metrics are designed the way they are for opportunity, growth, and disproportionality. We're holding ourselves to a higher standard than the state would hold us. And so just two other points to just drive this home that, you know, if a system doesn't work for a school district, you know, there's got to be better ways, better ways than what they're marching towards right now.
So, Rob, is there a way to share that letter with the board and maybe even put it on the website, since it's been sent to the state board? I think it would be really helpful to read it, because it sounds like there's lots of really helpful information in there.
Yep. No, I can certainly share that.
Richard, anything else?
I just appreciate what you're doing, Rob. I know that the state board has its own issues, and I think some of them are political. But, yeah, that's all I'm going to say. I know what the problem is, but that's all I'm going to say.
Lisa.
Not really. Just thank you, Rob. I appreciate all you had to say, and especially that clarification around demographics and the way we think about accountability.
All right. Anything else? Otherwise, we'll move on to, we don't have anybody signed up. The one person who signed up for public hearing and public participation canceled. So we will move on to board communication. Stacy.
So I wanted to congratulate the Broomfield High School baseball team for winning the 5A Chester State Championship on Saturday. I was fortunate enough to be there. It was amazing, exciting, tense, fun, all of those things. And there were so many students there, even though school was out. It was just a really great environment and atmosphere, and they pulled it off at the very last minute, basically, to win. So just wanted to say big congratulations to them.
Richard.
Just a heads up. Every year, we've had a Latino education conference or summit called CUSPIDA here in Boulder Valley. And this year, they're looking at having it again, but it's going to probably be a larger one. And I think they're kind of working a little bit now with Broomfield High School for it to be the location, at least through community schools, anyway. And I think they're going to do a walk-through tomorrow around 9:30, if you didn't know that. But I think it's community schools that's coordinating that. And I'll be meeting with Rob on Thursday with the group, because we want to see if Boulder Valley would become a cosponsor of that. And if so, hopefully, we can do away with those fees.
Lisa.
Sure. Let's see. I think what I'm thinking about is that school is out, and as a parent, I never appreciate teachers more than when I don't get to send my kids to them. So just a big thanks to everybody in BVSD for a fantastic year, and we're excited for the next one.
Kitty.
No, I don't have anything to share right now.
Nicole.
I don't have anything to share.
And Beth.
I guess I don't have anything to share, but I guess I'll echo what Lisa just said. Completely agree. This is a lot of reflection and just gratitude for all the work that everyone has been doing for our students this year.
And so, as I had said, I'm going to just read the resolution that's on the website that I think gives a little bit more information about the Adams 12 and Adams 14 situation, so that people understand what's going on. And then you'll put the, this is on the website, I think, and you'll put the letter on there, just so if people want to understand what the state board's doing tomorrow, that there's a little bit more understanding about what the issues are. Because even though they're not asking us to absorb those kids, I think you're right, there's bigger issues at stake here, certainly issues that we need to be looking at. The legislature, as only the legislature can do, tried to fix the accountability system, and it is a mess, is my understanding. It's like if you finished by May 25th and you do one thing, but if you haven't finished and it's May 26th, you have another set of rules, and then we have a set of rules going forward, and another set of rules in another year. Anyway, it's a mess. And that was, it was a mess before they started messing with it. So it'll be interesting to see the audit. My understanding is they're not rolling it out till it can't impact the campaigns and the election. So we'll get that at some point. It's my own commentary. So anyway, here is the Adams 12 5-Star Resolution supporting Adams 14 School District and opposing the reorganization process. Whereas Commerce City, Colorado is an important industrial-based city in Adams County, home to working-class families of different ethnic, cultural, and linguistic backgrounds, with the predominant minority population being Hispanic. And whereas the nearly 7,000 students of the Adams 14 School District mirror the diversity of the Commerce City community. And whereas the students of Adams 14 and the schools they attend are important assets and integral parts of the strength of the community. And whereas the academic success of the students of Adams 14 and the quality of their schools is very important to the community. And whereas all students of Adams 14 deserve rigorous and effective academic programming to enable them to achieve post-secondary and workforce readiness and post-graduation success. And whereas the Adams 14 board members have been duly elected by Commerce City voters. And whereas the components needed to turn Adams 14 around are present within the community of Adams 14. And the students can succeed if provided with an immediate infusion of resources and support, along with the other prioritized and maximized assistance of the state board, the Colorado Department of Education, and others. And whereas by its May 24th, 2022 order, the Colorado State Board of Education removed accreditation from Adams 14 District and directed Adams 14 and its three surrounding school districts to proceed with an unproven, time-consuming, and resource-intensive reorganization process, which threatens the very existence of Adams 14. And whereas reorganizing Adams 14 out of existence would be detrimental to the fabric of its community. And whereas at a time when the focus of limited time and limited resources should be on improving the outcomes for current and future students, the state board's actions harm Adams 14, the Adams 14 Board, students, parents, the Commerce City community, and other stakeholders. And whereas the School District Organization Act of 1992 is not suitable, where none of the school districts are voluntary participants in the reorganization process, and the process has no precedent or likelihood of success. And whereas the reorganization process is not likely to lead to the improvement of outcomes for the students of Adams 14, and would only serve to erode stability in the district, therefore be it resolved that the Adams 12 5-Star School Board of Education supports the Adams 14 Board of Education and its constitutional right to local control of instruction in its school. And be it further resolved, the Adams 12 5-Star School Board of Education opposes the reorganization process, because it would be distracting from the priority of improving academic outcomes for all students, and would further strain the limited resources of Adams 14, Mapleton School District, Brighton School District 27J, and Adams 12 5-Star Schools. And be it further resolved, the state board of education is urged to rescind its order of May 24th, 2022, and to focus its efforts on developing near-term collaborative strategies to immediately assist Adams 14 School District in improving outcomes for all its students. And I think what this mentions, Rob, in addition to what you raised, is that they do have a democratically-elected school board, and how important a school is to the fabric of a community, especially a community that's struggling, like Commerce City. And I would say that Jenny Brundin did a really nice job, went and interviewed the students, and talked to the students. And the students were like, "We wish the state board would come talk to us." And what you're hearing is a concern about students at 50,000 feet, but not a concern about the community and the students who are actually going to be impacted. So I think what I'm hearing from this board, and you can communicate, Rob, is that we support that board. We will do what we can to support, even though it doesn't directly impact us, because there are really important issues here. So thank you for taking the lead on that. And if anybody has questions, they can certainly reach out to us, because I think it's an important issue. The other thing I'd like to raise, just for us to think about as we go forward, is there been some, there's been polling data, the Magellan Poll, the most recently published. And what was concerning to me in that poll was that, some of it wasn't too surprising. I mean, I think parents generally like their schools. The non-parent community doesn't really know what we're doing. And what I'm worried is that when the public was asked, "Are we good stewards of our money?" the polling numbers went way down. So I would like to figure out, rather than asking our CFO to do another slide deck, and I want all the board to think about this, and Randy and his staff, how do we communicate how we're spending our public dollars in a more effective and efficient way? Because I think that mistrust is troubling to me, because where we sit, one of our main jobs is to make sure that we're spending our money correctly. And I believe that with the stewardship of you, Dr. Anderson, and Bill Sutter, and the amazing staff we have, we are good stewards. But how do we get that message out? And how do we respond to questions about it? As we think about whether we're going to go forward with a bond, as we think about trying to increase the trust that our community has in us, I'm trying to figure out, what do we do? How do we communicate that in a way that's effective and going forward? So that's kind of my quandary for us all to be thinking about over the next month, because if they don't think we're managing money, well, they're not going to trust us. And that, I know public education is like, kind of in the crosshairs for lots of reasons, but on the financial management one, I feel pretty strongly that we need to figure out how to explain that to people in a better way that people will understand. So, Rob, you wanted to respond?
Well, I think that it's just clarifying for the community what is the truth about BVSD, right? You know, our award-winning financial department, what, 10 years running, Bill, if more, more, right? You know, we follow the best accounting procedures that meet national standards. We have a healthy fund balance, but not too healthy, right? We're spending our money on our kids. We have great bond ratings. And so I think we're going to work with our team to figure out, how do we get the truth out? It's not even the word "out," it's the truth, that we're great stewards of taxpayer dollars, that we managed our last bond incredibly well. And so, you know, just how do you get the truth out so folks can hear it and understand it and digest it for the 70% to 80% of citizens that don't have kids in our schools? And I think that that's the challenge that we have ahead of us, is communicating with those folks.
Lisa.
I think that's right. I think some other things that stood out is maybe clarifying for the community a little about what bonds do and what they don't do, and how we can fund capital projects, and how we fund teacher salaries, and all these different streams. Additionally, I think I've learned a lot from Rob Price about deferred maintenance and what it means to pay money today rather than to pay more money tomorrow, talking more about some of those costs. And I think, finally, we need to discuss the fact that we have students in Erie who have to go someplace, and if we don't build them a facility, that's just not an option. So making sure we're clarifying all of these things. Those comments were great. I think it really helped us understand what the community does and doesn't know about the work we're doing, and then taking that information and messaging to them the information they don't have yet is really the next piece.
I'll just go one by one, because I can't see any body language. So Nicole, anything to add to that?
I agree with what you were saying, but she's been having raising her hand, and I'll let her go.
Okay. Go ahead.
Talking to me?
Yes.
No, happily, I really happily brought that up, because I was thinking a lot of the same thing, and how people tend to assume we're spending money in ways that we're not, because most people, even if they have kids in the district, don't really understand how the finances work, and which chapters are used for which expenses. So I think it's great that we wanted to get information out there so people will understand, you know, what we're doing with their money, and that we are doing a good job being stewards of their money.
Beth, anything?
No, nothing at all.
I think it's also important, because especially in Boulder, but across the state, we've seen skyrocketing real estate values, so people's taxes are going up, and people have a hard time understanding the relationship between those two. And since we are funded by property taxes, I think trying to explain all of those inner workings is complicated, but not at the 50,000-foot level. And I have confidence that between Randy and you and Bill, that we can figure out ways to message that as we go forward, because I just think it's supercritical that our public trusts us, especially, like you said, Rob, the 60% to 70% that don't have kids in our schools. So it's just kind of a challenge for us to be thinking about that. I just wanted to throw out there. So I don't have anything else, anybody else for public comment, or sorry, board comment? So it's just kind of a challenge for us to be thinking about that. I just wanted to throw out there. So I don't have anything else, anybody else for public comment, or sorry, board comment?
No, I also read the Magellan report, and it seemed like there were a lot of people that don't have children in school that were very supportive of the district and the process. So I'm not sure how you can spin that, not spin it, but make the public aware that, yeah, we do have a lot of families or people that don't have children in school that clearly support the effort.
That's why we need like the brains of the Randys and the Bills and the Dr. Andersons to help figure out how we target those messages and get to the audiences that we need to get to. All right, anything else on this? So for information, it's legislative update, and fortunately, the legislature's not in session, so we've seen the governor out about doing his signing tours, but nothing that I think we need to respond to on that. So we will move to action items, consent grouping. So 7.1 personnel items, 7.2 approval of minutes, May 24, 2022 special meeting, approval of minutes, May 24, 2022 regular meeting, 7.4 acceptance of donation, Crestview Elementary, 7.5 resolution 22-18 authorized construction projects and purchasing. Are there any items that board members would like to pull from the consent grouping? Anybody remotely want to pull anything? I'm not hearing anything, so I'm assuming no. So do we have a motion? So moved by Stacy, second.
Second.
By Richard. Anybody remotely, discussion? Going, 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 gone? Okay, Chris, can you call the roll, please?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gipphart?
Yes.
Niznik?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Ziz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Our next action item is, as Rob mentioned, 8.2 academic calendar for 2223 spring break change. Is there a motion to approve this action item?
So moved.
Richard moves, Stacy seconds. Do we have any discussion on this action item other than what Stacy mentioned during her comments? Any from remote?
You know, one question that I had, or comment that I received from some folks, is about how some of charter review calendars be different from BVSDs, and how BVSD or something can work together to help find some of that out in the future. I'm not sure, you know, we may do our charter reviews, our contract reviews, if that's a thing we can discuss at that time.
I'm looking at our ABLE School District Council, and I think we'll just have to look into that as we negotiate contracts. And that's what she's saying, is that's what we need to do. Because I think each charter gets to decide that, but we could certainly talk to them about that as part of our negotiations.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments about this action item, academic calendar 2223? All right, Chris, can you call the roll, please?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gipphart?
Yes.
Niznik?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Ziz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Turn it on. Next up, we have our policy action consent grouping. We have 9.1 revisions to board policy BDF advisory committees, and 9.2 adoption of new board policy BDFF long-range advisory committee. Are there any items board members want to pull from the consent grouping?
9.2? Or I got a question. I don't know if that...
Either way, Richard, you can pull it, or we can have a conversation.
Let's just pull it.
Okay, we're pulling 9.2. Anybody for 9.1? Okay, so do we have a motion to pass 9.1 revisions to board policy BDF?
So moved.
Richard moves, Stacy seconds. Any discussion on 9.1? Nothing from remote board members, nothing from present board members. So, Chris, can you call the roll on 9.1, please?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gipphart?
Yes.
Niznik?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Ziz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So we now turn to 9.2, and the floor is yours, Richard.
On the membership, where it reads, "The board will strive to reflect the diversity of the BVSD community with respect to social, economic, ethnic, geographic, and age demographics, as well as constituents with and without school-aged children." I would like to add, BVSD community with respect to social, economic, ethnic, and linguistic, just add linguistic, making sure that we can reach out to the Spanish-speaking population also, or other speakers of, that are non-English speakers.
Is that all right, Kathleen?
Yes, it is. I think that's an easy change to make. I do, I did receive some comments from board member Sargent, who is a wonderful checker of grammar. She had a few other comments, particularly to BDFF. So my suggestion is that I bring it back at the next meeting with board member Sargent's and board member Garcia's comments reflected.
Board member Sargent, are you all right with that?
Yes.
All right, so I think, Richard, is that all right?
That's fine. It's just, we're not creating anything in terms of timing here, are we? No? Okay.
We can bring it back next week, right, on the 14th? So. Okay, so this one will be brought for policy action next week on the 14th. This could be one of the fastest meetings we've been through. I just got kicked out of Board Docs, but my meeting here says that now we're on future agenda items. So let's go with remote. Anybody remotely have anything they want to add for future agenda requests? Beth?
I don't.
Kitty doesn't?
No, Kitty.
Beth doesn't? Nicole?
No.
Anybody here have anything for future agenda requests? I'm seeing nobody nodding their head. Are there any other items that we haven't talked about that board members would like to raise at this time? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn? By Stacy, seconded by Richard? Chris, can you call the roll on adjourning?
Garcia?
Yeah.
Gipphart?
Yes.
Niznik?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Ziz?
Yes.